Item two is the approval of the agenda, and I would like to entertain a motion to change Agenda item 8.2 under New Business from preliminary to conceptual plan.
I so move.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item three is citizens' comments.
Senator, citizens' comments.
Thank you. Item four is approval of the minutes.
Move to approve.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item five is recommendations, 2014, there are none. Item six, bonds. John, would you like to speak to that?
Uh, first one for Whispering Wind Street, the amount of $45,000 is due June 14th. Uh, I'm sorry, expires April 16th. We have contacted the developer and the, uh, the bank, it's a letter of credit under the bond, and they have said it will be in place probably on the 16th. It'll soon be in place. The second one, 6.1 and 6.2, over there, they're having a contract with, uh, we have an opportunity to make that one on the other side.
Um, Senator Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve that, um, on condition that we receive that by April 16th. If not, we go ahead and automatically call that bond. One second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. If it's not...
We won't have another meeting to call it, so...
Okay.
And that motion is for 6.1 and 6.2?
We will actually have another bond, another hearing before the 6.2.
Yes, we do have one more meeting before that, but it's real close to that meeting, so we could either put this...
I don't have a problem with adding 6.1 and 6.2 to that mo- motion.
Okay, we have a motion to call the bonds if they're not in place by the next meeting.
Oh, by the 15th and by the 19th.
By the 15th and 19th, which will be before the next meeting, the next planning commission Any more discussion? Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item seven is old business, there is none. Item eight is new business. 8.1 is discuss or take action on proposed THP Fairview T-Dot Communication Tower located at 520 Highway 96 North, map 22, parcel 158, State of Tennessee owner.
Is approved.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 8.2, conceptual plat for Whispering Wind subdivision, map 47, parcel 67.01, 10.47 acres, R20 zone, four lots, Walt Toddie owner. I will have Mr. Beata read the engineer's comments.
Okay, so the, this is the engineering comments for the Whispering Wind subdivision. Number one, please note the existing pavement width of Cumberland Drive on the plat. Number two, please show the septic soil areas and their absorption rates for each of the proposed lots. All proposed septic system components must be fully located within the proposed boundaries of the lot in which the system will serve. Additionally, the Williamson County Health Department will require a certification block and standard septic notes on the final plat. Number three, the existing SSDS easement for the existing Lot 1 needs to be labeled as an easement and should include, should include the meets and bounds for the exact boundary of the area as delineated on the previously approved plat for the existing Lot 1. Section, number four, section 4-104.2 of the sub regs requires five-foot wide sidewalks to be installed along Cumberland Drive unless the planning commission determines otherwise. Please show the proposed sidewalk location on the plat. Number five, section 4-114.4 of the sub regs requires a five, a fire hydrant to be within 500 feet of proposed building envelopes. Please show the location of the closest fire hydrant. If there isn't an existing fire hydrant that meets this requirement, please show the proposed location of a new fire hydrant that meets the requirement. Number six, section 4-115.2 of the sub regs requires mandatory connection to the public sanitary sewer line if, in the determination of the planning commission, the existing line is accessible to the subdivision. Number seven, if each lot will not have separate and independent water and electric service lines, then the location and size of the proposed shared service lines needs to be shown on the plat along with the appropriate utility easements. Number eight, please show contour lines at a minimum of two-foot intervals on the plat. And number nine, stormwater detention is to be provided for projects in which the post-developed runoff exceeds the pre-developed runoff. Please provide stormwater analysis submittals in accordance with section 4-113.4 of the sub regs in order to effecti- effectively determine if stormwater detention will be required. That's all for the engineering comments. Oh.
Just staff comments, sir.
Should I go, go ahead with the staff comments as well?
Just so everyone knows, that's fine, you can write those.
Okay. Uh, this is staff requirements, uh, that are in conjunction with, uh, item 8.2. Number one, please include the zoning designation of all adjacent parcels. Number two, under the existing Lot 1 label, please include a reference to the plat book and page of the previously recorded plat for Lot 1. Also include this plat reference under the label for the existing 30-foot ingress egress easement. Number three, the proposed plat should be titled re-subdivision of Lot 2 of Whispering Wind subdivision. Number four, the correct zoning of the subject parcel is R20. There is no PUD zoning designation for the subject parcel. Please revise plat accordingly. Additionally, please relabel the lots as lots 2A through 2D. Number five, section 5-103.2 hyphen, or parentheses 3, of the zoning ordinance requires the proposed lots to have a minimum lot frontage width of 50 feet along the public right-of-way. Please revise plat accordingly. Number six, on the previously recorded plat, there is an existing 50-foot ingress egress easement that generally runs east-west across the proposed Lot 2. If this easement is to be abandoned, please include a note on the plat stating that. And number seven, section 4-111.1 of the sub regs requires at least 10% of the subdivision area be reserved for neighborhood recreational uses unless the planning commission determines that this requirement is not practical for the proposed development. If determined not to be practical, a recreation fee may be paid in lieu of a reservation of land per the fee schedule established by the governing body. And that's all of the staff review comments.
Mr. Toddie giving questions?
Uh, well, not really. Everything is pretty plain.
Okay.
Uh, I guess I do have one about the, uh, number seven on the staff review about the, uh, 10% land for a green space. There is an area...
That's okay, go ahead.
There's an area in there that, uh, it's like 1.27 acres that can't be used for anything, it's gotta be left wooded. I figured that could be used for that.
John's gonna accept that.
For that.
It's all right.
It'd be acceptable.
I would just have to see where it is located. I don't think it's on the plat.
It's on that thing y'all had on, on that.
On the previous plat?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You say that's wooded and has, it can't be used?
Well, it can't be, no cutting or fitting the machines.
Is that by the county's?
Yes. So, all right, there's, there's the field lines of that Lot 1 right there, running left to right, and then you got those two square boxes underneath it. All that is under that easement right there, that's 1.28 acres, I believe is what that says. Uh, that could serve as this 10% green area due to nothing... It just got to be left undisturbed as far as machinery goes. So, that's one of the questions there, and, uh, really, that's...
John, that means a requirement for green space?
Uh, I would have to defer to Mr. Owen on that.
It looks like that should be, to me, looks like that should be part, part of Lot 1 since it serves Lot 1 for the septic system.
Uh, it should be, um, but, uh, the plat that's already been recorded has indicated that it's not, so...
Well, the plat was recorded, well, I think was previously, I was on the planning commission back when it was approved years ago, and that was to be many, many more lots with, with sewer, so I'm assuming this was gonna be abandoned...
Right.
...with the accessibility of sewer, but since it's being revised now, it appears that that should all be part of Lot 1, since Lot 1 is gonna be utilizing that.
Correct. I, in an ideal situation, I would be in full agreement with that. The issue's going to come to play in that Lot 1 is not currently owned by the same owner as Lot 2 is. So Lot 1 would have to be in agreement that they're willing to basically add that area to their lot, uh, and would have to sign off on a plat that revises their property lines. So we're, we're, you, the, the current owner of Lot 2 that is currently up for being re-subdivided, uh, if, if that was, I guess, if, if that owner was held to that standard, then he would be at the mercy of the Lot 1 owner and would have no, no authority to, to make that happen, you know, in, in his power, I guess, so to speak, so... But yes, uh, when, when the plat originally came through, and, and I don't know, uh, the exact timing of it, but, um, i- if it came through today, as, as was mentioned in one of the review comments, that any lots that are proposed to be served by septic system, that that, the entirety of that system must be located within the boundaries of the lot that it serves. And so I, my, I suspect that maybe not this specific instance, but there may have been a number of instances that were similar to this that may have warranted or, or was the predecessor to making that provision, um, making that change in the sub regs to require that from here on out. And so that's what your current standard is. As far as the green space, uh, I, I, I wanna be careful about the technicalities of the language that's being used. Uh, the, the language in the sub regs actually states recreational use, and then it gives an example of a neighborhood playground. It, it doesn't, there is no use of the language green space, so I believe, if you'll allow me to interpret the intention of this particular requirement, I believe it was intended to be applicable to large-scale subdivisions in which you had homeowners' associations that kept up entrance signs, uh, maybe had a community pool or community clubhouse, and then also a, a neighborhood playground that would be located in a publicly-owned, being publicly-owned by the homeowners' association, not an individual lot owner. So, my suggestion would be that a recreational, the 10% recreational use, in my determination of what my interpretation of the requirement would be, is that it may not be, uh, completely applicable to a scenario such as this, where you're just dividing, uh, a 10-acre parcel into four, in essence, larger tract parcels than what would be considered, uh, in a smaller, more dense-type subdivision. That's just my interpretation, you, you can certainly interpret it differently, uh, but that's, that's where I believe that intention, the intention of that's, uh, requirement came from. So I would advise you that if you desire to have or require that 10% standard, that it would need to be in, uh, public lands that would be operated, owned, and maintained by some type of association, uh, in which that we would have documents recorded that stated they would be responsible for that maintenance. Uh, I might suggest to you that, that this may not be a suitable application for that particular standard.
And I may interpret that a little different as well. In my mind, that would be for subdivision with smaller lots, half-acre, quarter-acre lots to where they don't have room for kids to have their own playset or whatever, and this, this is a little bigger lots. I got one more question, uh, for Mr. Toddie regarding this septic system. Have you discussed this with the county to see if they'll actually let someone else own, somebody else's septic and field lines?
Well, they have ever since that right there was recorded. The people, uh, Steve Weimer was his name, bought it from the original owner that set this in motion, and that's the way they let it go. Now, with the easement right there that covers that area to protect it from somebody coming in there and just cutting a ditch right straight up the property line and cutting the field lines loose from the property, that's obviously what that easement is to, to protect. So, I, do they have a problem with it? I don't know. It's been that way ever since it was subdivided into Track 1 and Track 2, so... Guess I'll get his mind right there.
I'll address that on, on what I know, uh, from past situations. There have been situations, uh, other than this subdivision where the subsurface system is on a, another property, as long as that easement is in place. Uh, they have approved that and recorded that on other, other properties. It's not ideal, but it, it works.
And, and just, just for clarity purposes, what, what's on the screen currently, right now, is what currently exists today as far as property divisions. Uh, and it was done by a prior owner than, than Mr. Toddie. So, Mr. Toddie had no involvement whatsoever with the division that you see on the screen right now. Mr. Toddie's involvement purely is that he purchased the, what's, what's indicated as Lot 2, the 10.47 acres, after this was already divided. When that took place, Mr. Toddie purchased the area that included the septic and subsurface curtain drain and, and all the remainder that served Lot 1. So as, as the property sits today, uh, the septic system sits off of the property in which it serves today, even if you took no, no action and no division of land was being sought for this, uh, for Lot 2. So that, that's where that stands.
Do we have Mr. Toddie's plan, his intentions for the screen? Not this one?
Should we put it down? Can we put it down on the table?
I, I have it. Uh, we don't have it on the screen, no. We don't have it.
We don't? Okay, because this is, you know, not, I mean, this is, this is the way it is, but not what he's asking to do, so I kinda wanted...
Correct. Everyone should have what, what he's asking for.
We, we do, but for, for the public, I was kinda wanting...
No, we do not have that in format.
Should we put it on the overhead? Can it go on the overhead?
I'm not sure. Can we do that?
While they may be checking that, um...
Here we go.
The, the, one of the primary reasons, well, let me back up. Uh, to give you a little bit of history of how derived it, it, the current scenario is, uh, and there were a number of... And even 2001, in which the entirety of this property was not in the city limits. Uh, the current property owner at the time requested annexation, I think there were, and this is all from, uh, review of meeting minutes for planning commissions and, uh, board of commissioners. Uh, there, there was some back and forth discussion on the validity of annexing this property. Ultimately, the property was annexed, and, uh, there was some, some rezoning requests that took place. Uh, the property currently is Zoned R20, and that was done, uh, in the early 2000s as well. And then, there was an initial proposal to divide the, the entirety, what would be the, now shown as existing Lot 1, and then Lot, uh, Lot 2, the 10.47 acres, to subdivide that property into 17, uh, roughly half-acre lots, uh, with a new roadway being constructed to the, to serve those lots. And at that time, it was, there was tremendous discussion, uh, about extending a public sewer to serve those 17 lots, because the, uh, soil types and soil availability for that area was not suitable to serve 17 lots, certainly. So the discussions took place on, uh, how the sewer was going to be extended, in what manner, from which direction, and then ultimately, who, who was gonna be responsible for paying for it. Uh, as best I can tell in a review of those minutes, that approvals for that 17 lot subdivision, preliminary approvals were granted. Uh, I don't believe agreements could ever be, come to on who was gonna share in the cost of responsibility of extending that sewer, and all this is the previous owner, has nothing to do with the current owner. Um, and so basically, it, it died on the vine, so to speak, and, and it was never pursued as 17 lots. As a result of it not being pursued as 17 lots because of financial constraints, uh, I believe on the previous owner, uh, he came back, and then that's when he subdivided out existing Lot 1. Again, the previous owner came, came and subdivided that out, I believe for his own personal residence. So that was done, and then the remainder of the 10 point, or the remainder of the area, 10.47 acres identified as Lot 2, uh, basically left, uh, was, was left undeveloped and sat. Uh, and so that's how you've gotten to the point now. The intention was that eventually existing Lot 1 would be a part of a larger development, meaning more lots, uh, I think to resemble, more closely resemble the 17 lot, um, layout, and that's why it's got that odd curve shape to it, because I think, uh, that was intended at some point to be a cul-de-sac with a new road coming to it. Uh, obviously, that never took place. Uh, the, the property owner that was desire, desiring to do all that, uh, who, again, owned Lot 1 and Lot 2 at the time, I believe wound up selling both lots, Lot 1 and Lot 2, uh, and so that's where the, uh, diverging ownership comes into play. So as you can tell, the existing Lot 1 doesn't have any road frontage. Uh, it, it's a lot that is accessed by an, an existing ingress egress easement. Uh, that existing width is 30 feet wide, uh, and again, as it exists today on the previously recorded plat. Uh, there's also a 50-foot wide easement that runs across what's being proposed as Lot 2, um, but again, I think it was intended for, and if we can have that old, the old plat, um, I've actually got it. Hang on, it'd be, maybe easier just to switch back and forth. You can see there, the, the, just below the north arrow, in between the north arrow, uh, basically in, in the gravel driveway, there's a 50-foot ingress egress easement for future dedicated right-of-way. Again, I think the intention at some point by the previous owner was to have a new road brought in there with a cul-de-sac ending there at existing Lot 1, and obviously, that never took place. So again, one of the review comments was that if the intention is to abandon this easement, uh, then, uh, it needs to be noted on the plat so that there's clear title to, to that new lot that's being created, and it wouldn't be encumbered by that easement. The 30-foot access easement that actually is utilized to get to the existing Lot 1 obviously would need to remain in place for the protections of, uh, of that property owner going to Lot 1. And so, uh, that's, that's where, and actually, the, the new, one of the new property lines is down the middle of that 30-foot easement, so 15 feet on either side of the new property line would be a part of, of that existing easement, and has been noted there.
When was this subdivided into two lots?
I can find it for you in just a second.
This was recorded on August 1st, 2005.
Correct.
So the two-lot subdivision was probably done in-house, not by a planning, by the planning commission?
I'm not certain. I'd have to go back and look at the minutes and see if it went to the planning commission.
So here again, if I'm reading this right, section 5-103.2, parentheses 3, says you're supposed to have 50 foot of minimum lot frontage for every lot. So, are, somebody, if this was approved for a two-lot subdivision, violated our own zoning ordinance?
Well, the, there is a provision to allow for, um, easement access. Uh, that, the easement currently, as your current sub regs state, the minimum width for easement access has to be 50 feet. Uh, so obviously, the, the width would be a discrepancy with your current sub regs. I'm not aware of what the sub regs at the time this plat was, was approved and recorded were. I don't know if they were the same. I believe your current sub regs were adopted in 2007, around that range, so it could be that the prior subdivision regulations did allow that. I, I'm, I'm not certain on that.
Um, Mr. Gillette, so can you, um, replace back the other, I wanna, um, Mr. Rowe and, and I had a meeting with, uh, Mr. Toddie today, and I just wanna clarify some things that you're seeing that's highlighted. In blue is the drive that connects Cumberland to the existing lot that's now owned, uh, by Mr., I think it's Kanane, I guess that's how you say it. Um, so that would come in off of Cumberland as a, a gravel drive to his lot. The two, um, other highlighted areas, one pink and I guess the other one's kind of orange, those are intended to be gravel driveways coming off of Cumberland, one connecting to Lot 3, and then one, it's down below, connecting to Lot 4. As you see there. That's where that easement comes in that was purchased, but it's now two gravel driveways. So that's just, you know, for clarification of why those are highlighted like that. My question is, is there a difference in subdivisions? Does, you know, are, are regulations, I mean, are they different for a 17-house subdivision? Different than a, a four-lot subdivision?
The general...
Sorry, a 17-lot subdivision?
Sure. The, the general response is, no, there, there is, as far as what's required, there isn't really any difference, other than, like, for example, what, what was previously discussed as far as the neighborhood, uh, park and play area. You know, there's some, some discrepancy given to the planning commission to determine in some gray areas on what may be applicable, what might not. The, the real difference comes, um, in procedural aspects on whether it's designated as a major subdivision or a minor subdivision.
Anything over four is a major, am I correct?
Uh, no.
Four or more?
Uh, anything, um, two or more lots, and then meeting four additional criteria, uh, and any of the four additional criteria. Uh, one of, and the four additional criteria is this, a new or extended street or street right-of-way, that would not be applicable in this, in what's being presented tonight.
Okay, let me just understand. The difference between a minor subdivision and a major subdivision is, for clarification?
Yes. This, this is what...
Okay, I just wanted that...
In order to, in order to meet the definition of a major subdivision, these, one of these four things has to be present, or, or more. A new or extended street or street right-of-way, that, that's not applicable here. That's not applicable here. That's not being proposed. Improvements within an existing street right-of-way, other than repair, construction of sidewalks, or other pedestrian connections. You are having, if you deem it necessary, there are sidewalks that would be required along, existing right-of-way along Cumberland Drive, but that's specifically excluded from being considered meeting the requirement for a major subdivision. The third one is, a future public school site, park site, greenway, corridor, open space, that's not applicable. And the last one is, the dedication of a right-of-way or easement for construction of public water distribution or sewage collection lines. That could be applicable. If each individual lot isn't served individually by a service line back to the public main, then an easement would be required for that line that is coming to serve more than one lot. If that's the case, then it would meet the definition of a major subdivision. If each lot has individual service lines, water and sewer, if you deem sewer to be extended, and power, then there would be no easement required, because those individual service lines fall within the boundaries of the property that it's serving, and therefore, it would not meet the definition of a major subdivision. So the real distinction, in my opinion, here is, will each lot have individual service lines, or will there be a larger main that's extended that each lot comes off of, in which an easement would be required to maintain that line? And if the answer is yes, then it would fall in the major subdivision category. If the answer is no, then it falls back to a minor subdivision category.
So the question is, do these twenty lots going to have their own individual sewage and water and power?
The first question is going to be, are you going to require sewer to be extended? And your determination is sewer available to the subdivision? Unfortunately, there is no, it has to be within X number of feet to be, to fall within that threshold. It's completely at your decision. I generally think that that was meant to indicate, if sewer is on the road frontage that is being divided...
Which it is.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
I'm just asking the question.
If sewer is on the road, existing road frontage in which the property that's being divided sits, then my interpretation is that a public sewer need to be extended to each of those lots. In this case, the public sewer line, which is a forest main from Waterthorry Dixon County, is a thousand, a couple thousand feet away. So it would be an extensive effort in both construction and cost to extend the sewer to these lots. But again, there is no defining threshold that says, yes, you must extend it, or no, you don't have to. It's kind of on a case-by-case basis.
But it's an either-or, either we'll have the easement, or you'll extend the lines.
Well, you'll either extend the public sewer line, or you'll have individual septic tanks for each lot. Correct. And I believe, I believe, Mr. Totti, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think you've already had some preliminary soil work done?
Yes.
And it's, that has come back to indicate that the four-lot division that's being proposed would be sustainable by the existing soils that are out there.
Mr. Rowe, you've got something?
Yeah. I was just waiting.
You had a twitch, I didn't.
Yeah. Just kind of the comment, after reviewing it myself. If you look at the surrounding area, and what is there now, existing, you have one-acre lots across the street from that that are unseptic. You have a 115-acre parcel to the left of it, if you're looking up this way, or to the west. There's ten-acre parcels, there's 2.4-acre parcels. I look at it as, if Fairview wants to maintain the country position or atmosphere, that a high-density housing developments would not be in the best interest, I think. That's my personal. So, when someone comes in and says, "I want to do four with what I would classify as like an estate-type lot, that's one acre or two acres," it blends in with that area. So, I personally like this, because it blends in with, well, I've talked to a lot of residents, and they want to see that country feel and atmosphere maintained in the city. Now, one of the things that they say on here, too, is, I had a question that I presented to Mr. Totti today, too, that since it's R-20 zoning, half-acre lots, what would prevent a homeowner from a two-acre lot, let's say, to subdivide that? And your answer was?
It couldn't be done because of septic field area.
Right.
Because if anything that's under septic field Williamson County, they hold the trump card. They pretty much dictate what you can, can't do with your lot. And it has to, your soil has got to accommodate ever how many building sites you want to put on it. So, in this case here, it will accommodate four. But, and it preliminarily perked for a possible five, but there's not room for five, so it pretty much sizes it up as far as how many, or as far as somebody being able to, say, cut their lot in half. And of course, if the ingress and egress would, I would think, prevent that anyway from being possible.
Unless the 115-acre tract beside it got developed, and there was city sewer available then. Then you may end up with Lots 2 and 3, and actually, 4 touches it as well, would have access to that sewer down the road, possibly.
The other, the other item was Item 4 on here about the five-foot sidewalk. I see that in a regular subdivision, or a high-density subdivision, having a walkway to somewhere. If you go out on Cumberland, and you would see the, on the perimeter up there of Cumberland and this lot, it would be just a sidewalk in that one section that would go nowhere. So I'm not sure that's in the best interest financially for anybody, because the city has to maintain the sidewalks, I believe. So that was my, my comment on that, and I think that's about... Oh, well, could you explain that, like you did today, about the water and the electric service, servicing those lots?
Electricity, the primary can come down the line right there to service three and four from the back, one and two, or not this existing Lot 1, but the one in front of. Those two front ones can come off the road frontage overhead lines. As far as the water, if there's a main extended back there, they could come off of that main line, or they can be tapped across the road and run up the area that's in purple or orange, which that says 25, but it'll have to be 50 feet each. So if it had to be done that way, there's plenty of room, because you've got fifty feet to run a water line up through there, and have a driveway also. Lot 2 and the one in front of existing Lot 1 right there, which I guess that is Lot 1 on that. It can, their water service will come off of Cumberland Drive right there at the main line.
The water for existing Lot 1 already run down that thirty-foot easement?
It does, as far as I know. I'm not absolutely positive, hadn't went out there and checked and looked and seen exactly where their meter box is, but I would say yes.
Then I had one final, to add on to the plat, preliminary plat, another signature line for the planning commission chairman and the secretary to sign the plats. Two signatures. And that's all I have.
So, Mr. Rowan, are you saying you consider this a minor subdivision?
If each lot is having individual utility services to it, with individual taps on the main that's along Cumberland Drive, then yes, I would consider this, it meets the definition of a minor subdivision.
When you say taps on, are you talking, when you say taps on Cumberland Drive, you're referring to?
Connections. Connections to, if each individual lot has an individual connection to the existing water line on Cumberland Drive...
Okay, water line.
Then, then, yes, it would, it would meet the definition of a minor subdivision.
And the drives being easement and all gravel to each lot?
The drives as presented, other than the one shown in blue, which is the existing drive, the drives that are being presented are actual, not easements. They're actually a part of those, each of those lots. So the orange is actually owned by Lot 3, and the purple is owned by Lot 4. And if that is to continue, and I think the intent is for that to continue, then those would each need to be 50 feet wide each. And then there is, there would not be any access easements that would be required, since each of those lots would have 50 feet of road frontage that went to them. And they're flag lots, is what is commonly referred to, because obviously, the long skinny part is considered the pole, and then the square part is considered the flag, so... And that's a very common term utilized in subdivision regulations and development.
So at this, at this point, they're 25 feet each? So that means they would have to be increased to 50-foot each?
In order to meet the subdivision regulations, yes. And that's regardless of if it's considered a minor or a major subdivision.
And they can remain gravel?
Yes, yes. Since it's not considered an easement, it makes no diff, the city has no requirement or determination or care as to what their drive, what their individual driveways are. If it was an access easement that was accessing more than two lots, then that access easement would need to be, then the accessway within that easement would need to be constructed to city street standards. But this, that's not the scenario here. These are individual private driveways that are wholly located on the property in which they are serving. And the city doesn't regulate individual private driveways that serve a single lot.
No taps or meters there now, right?
Just that one to existing Lot 1 right there. He's got a water meter box out there somewhere he'd have to have.
Would there be any requirements for the distance between the two drives?
There is some requirements between the distance between those drives. Generally, we, the guidelines would call for those to be separated to the greatest extent possible.
I know, when this was approved back years ago, the preliminary plat that's already in place, there were some issues on visibility because of the curve. Have you all addressed those in any of your, in the staff comments? I know Mr. Hall was probably on the planning commission when this was passed years ago.
I don't remember whether we required a traffic study or not.
I'm almost sure then, if we could locate one, that the entrance to that subdivision had to be dead center of that curve, so you had visibility both ways.
Wouldn't be blind, right?
You don't end up with a blind driveway.
That would make sense, because, John, if you go back to that previously, or the actual recorded plat, that would indicate why you see that 50-foot ingress egress easement that runs up to the curve of Cumberland Drive. Now, I would remind you that that was for seventeen lots, with a significant more amount of traffic going in and out of that location. And as it's being proposed right now, the two driveways to single-family residential structures located on what's being proposed as Lots 3 and 4, those would be located in that general area. And then, obviously, Lot 2 would be further down, I guess, to the, what is that, east, along Cumberland Drive. But yeah, it seems like I recall in reviewing the minutes that there was some discussion about a traffic study. You do have provisions in which you can require traffic studies, and it gives general thresholds. The minimum threshold that it suggests for a traffic study to be done is on, I believe it's, if there's more than, it's either 50 or 100 residential lots being proposed, then that warrants a traffic study. The seventeen probably warrant it based on the curvature that's found in Cumberland Drive, but I think you certainly still request it for the four lots. But I don't know that that would be absolutely necessary. Certainly, it isn't necessary based on, on the thresholds that are in, in the subregs.
Mr. Totti, you explained that there was footage added on to that lot to cover the site view on that curve?
The best of my knowledge, originally, for the plat that was drawn at one time for seventeen lots, it was, to my knowledge, requested of the previous owner to add 50 feet to that side of the property for that road to come off of Cumberland Drive. So the, I think the road probably was originally 50 feet back to the east, and that may have been a site issue somehow or another, so an additional piece of property, I think, was added to that to scoot that road over to be in the center of that turn, for more visibility, I would think.
And I'd, too, just point out that the comment list is more lengthy maybe than you're used to. In my estimation, the result, well, the trigger for the lengthy comment list has more to do with the history and how we've gotten to this point, and trying to gain some clarity for both the current owner and the planning commission on how you desire to move forward with the development of this property. And so that's where, you know, a number of the issues that were raised previously have kind of resurfaced, more so in an effort to, so that you can be very clear to the current owner on what you are going to require, and then so he can receive those marching orders, so to speak, and then move forward as he deems necessary, whether to proceed with what he wants to do, based on your feedback tonight, or maybe change course and do something different. So that's, to me, that's the nature of kind of the lengthy comment lists, and I think it's brought out a lot of good discussion tonight on some things that are actually in your subregs, that you do have some leniency and some gray area to make some determinations based on a case-by-case basis.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think, before we give it back to Mr. Totti to read, make the revisions, and decide if he's going to conform to some of these, that there's a couple of on here I think we need to discuss as a commissioner, whether we want to see, like the five-foot sidewalk out on Cumberland, is that something we want to put in? You know, to give him direction, as Will said.
I would, I think I would like to see everything come back to us that is noted, even the five-foot sidewalks, and then, as we see it come back, ask for a variance from that, so we could have, kind of leave a crumb trail, so we could understand that, you know, we granted a variance, and we can mark it on the plat as he comes before us. But I agree, I agree with that on the... agree, I agree with that on the, I think the sidewalks, there needs to clearly be more detail on the, you know, what, what type of utilities with the water main tying in individually, things like that. But I think if we're able to see all these changes, then we could easily highlight and mark the variances as, as we see fit.
While they're considering that, wouldn't you also want to consider whether you're going to require the, the greenway area, play area, or whatever it is? Are you gonna, that would need to be included in your variance too if you're not going to require that? Or if you are going to require it, it would need to be shown on the drawing and then it'd be one of the things that you could consider with the other stuff. But you, you wouldn't want to leave it just out, hanging out there.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with not having the greenway part of it just for that small of a subdivision, it could be four acres.
I don't have a problem with it.
With the size of-
That's what you have to address.
That's okay with the, with the commissioner's comment that they're going to be over an acre and there's plenty of room right there. So, I wouldn't, especially if there might possibly be a question for that to be used for septic or, or whatever.
Yeah, I would personally like to see some clarification from the county on whether the county feels like that should be part of Lot 1, or if, if it can remain in that easement. Because the way it is now, who's gonna, which I know that it's wooded, so there's no maintenance on the property, even though it's an easement. You know, if Lot 1 was willing to take that, if it's no man's land anyway, it looks like it'd be in Lot 1's best interest to control his own septic and field lines. But if not, we just need some kind of clarification on the plat that the county's willing and able to let that stay in an easement.
So, we need to add that to recommendations from engineer? That we'll get that, check that by the county and get their approval back?
I would think so.
Well, I mean, is that what we're asking? The motion that we need to ask for?
The, the formal approval from the county will be their signing off on the septic notes and the septic certification. If they sign off on it, then that's, they've accepted it. If you want to, if you desire for, for maybe Mr. Blesso to, to touch base with them and get some feedback, some preliminary feedback on whether or not they would allow, you know, that to continue before-
I think that would be advantageous for Mr. Tardy to know too.
Well, and to answer Mr. Mangram's question, that they should have their own destiny of their own system, they do. That's why the easement is there for them to go and, and work on their systems. That's an easement created for the owner of Lot 1, for, not only for their septic system now, but also, also for future expansion of that system. And it's in the side of the easement for, in favor of that lot owner, although it is not part of their lot.
Like I said, as long as the county's good with that, I don't have a problem with it.
It's, it's neutral ground right now. It's woods. And really, I guess if there was four houses built in there, I don't really, if, if, if you're talking about maybe the greenway aspect of it, it's, it's wide open space for everybody to, to use. If we pitch it over to the existing Lot 1, then, then he's going to have sole control over it and maybe say, no, you stay off of my land. To where if people walking through there is not going to hurt anything, I mean, it's obvious enough, those who can't do any clearing or disturb the ground in any kind of way because of the easement.
I think the county's going to answer that question before we're seen.
Yeah.
Don't need to add anything else to it.
How much should we handle the 10%?
It's up to us to decide.
Would, would the 10% be required if it's a minor subdivision?
Yes, there's no distinction between the 10% requirement. I, I do think the one, if we do leave here tonight with only one specific item of clarity, it will be the septic versus public sewer. Because that, depending on your guidance on that requirement, that can significantly change the division of land for this particular parcel. So, if, if it's okay with the planning commission, I, I might suggest that you at least offer specific guidance on, yes, you do want to see public sewers extended there, or no, you don't. And then, then follow through with, with Mr. Biata's, you know, suggestion, or I guess motion or suggestion to, to see all the remainder of the improvements. And then from there, I guess peel back the onion, so to speak, if, if you wanted to move forward with allowing some, some deviations from, in some of those gray areas.
That's what I'd like to see, is that it come back to us with these issues addressed on the plat and we can decide now which ones that we don't, you know, we're not going to require.
Well, what, what, what Mr. Biata was talking about is go through all these right here, come back and we'll offer the variances on the ones that we want and we're not going to require.
Okay.
And that gives us an overview of how everything looks. Am I correct, Commissioner?
Yes, I was, I think originally I was, my statement was that we would see this back in print because there are so many just clarifications. I, I think hearing it out, the main things to consider, so when he comes back, he had, or when he goes back to the drawing board, he has a little more clarification. But I think going on Will, okay, the sewer, are we going to make them connect to Water Authority Dixon, which was several thousand feet down the road? And then I do think the 10% subdivision area is worth discussing because that would greatly alter, you know, how these lots lay out. Because we're talking that, you know, really the easement, the sewer septic easement for the existing Lot 1 really doesn't count as official, you know, public space. So, I think maybe we should put those two on the, on the table right now and discuss.
Also, I don't think it states in there that each one of these drives has to be 50 feet wide. Am I correct about that?
It says in the staff, it is number five on the staff. They, they say minimum lot frontage needs to be 50 foot.
Okay, minimum lot frontage. So, that would-
Those are acting as-
That would refer to the, the two drives that connect to the road. So, they would have to show 50 feet wide with some separation.
Madam Chair, I request that you poll the commissioners for their thoughts on those two issues, see what direction we go. 10% and on the sewer.
Okay. So, we're going to-
Start someplace.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Sutton?
I, I agree with the 10%. The, the over 1,000 feet of sewer line connection is, I don't think we should have to require that. That's a lot.
Mr. Mangram?
I'm fine with not having the 10% because these are, you know, all these lots are over an acre and they got plenty of room. If they've got kids and want a playground, they've got plenty of room on their own property to have it. So, I'm fine with that. And, and again, the lots are big enough for, for private sewer, or for private septic. So, I'm fine with that as well.
Mr. Butler?
I echo the thoughts of Mr. Mangram with the lot size allowing for recreation use and then also perking for, we wouldn't need requirements of city sewer.
I-
Mr. Biata?
Agree with the previous three commissioners that, again, just basically on, on the fact that these lots are all over an acre and seem to have plenty of land to perk for septic. And I don't think it's, and that goes in line too with the 10%.
Mr. Dowdy?
I agree with him. I think that the, the septic is fine. And the yard size, I don't see where they would need a playground. I think that's not necessary.
Mr. Mitchell?
I agree with, with all the other commissioners saying about, I mean, the lot sizes are fine as long as they're parked and it's fine with how it's hard, septic can be, I mean, there's no, there's no sewer available and cost effectiveness, you know, to that of the sewer line. It's just kind of a question for the lot subdivision.
Mr. Row?
I confer with the majority.
I do as well.
So, we're eliminating those two aspects of the point from the engineer. Is that correct?
Do we have to make a motion for that, Mr. Trump?
No, I don't think so, David Lee.
I would, I would just go ahead and get it formally passed so that when Mr. Tardy makes his, revises his drawing, he knows he don't have to face those issues again.
So, the motion would be to comply with the request of the city engineer with the exception of those two?
And our, the staff comments.
And staff comments.
Staff comments. That'd be my motion.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Item 9 is reports for discussion and information. 9.1 is Planning, Zoning Codes Department.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good job, guys. I, I think your discussion tonight was, was very beneficial for everybody involved. And I think I want you to always know that, certainly my comments and then in my drafting of, of the staff comments are an indication of, here's what's required in your book. And just exactly as what took place tonight, your determinations on, on how you want to see those either addressed or, or not addressed is certainly your determination. I've told you before, you're never going to hurt my feelings by striking anything from my report. So, I, I'm always going to do my best to give you, here's where the discrepancies are. You, you discuss them and, and decide how you want to move forward. And, and I think that was done in a very logical and meaningful manner tonight. So, good job.
City Attorney, Mr. Cantrell?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just want to echo what Will said. I won't go through all the stuff he did again because you already heard it. I do think you did a, a good job in working on this because while the issues were not, some of them were not that complicated, the overall project could get very complicated real quickly when you start considering the availability of sewer, the availability of water, the availability of the roads, and keeping the public safe. I want to compliment my friend Willow here. I think you'll agree, he was very well prepared on the issues tonight. And any time that you're prepared for something that comes up, two things. One, it makes you look like you were prepared. And number two, you generally do a much better job. Because I've seen cases lost when the person didn't have the facts, but the other guy was much better prepared. I will say something now that I wouldn't have said before because going back to the days of, of when the city owned the water sewer system, I didn't want to influence anybody's decision, but at that time, and that don't make anything sacred, but your decision certainly was in line with what has gone on in this city for years. At the time that they owned the water sewer, they looked at two things. One, was the sewer available on that street? And if it was available on the street, the distance, I mean, you could have a street that's four miles long and it doesn't matter if it's down at one end. I think you made the right decision and, because I'm not in the business of building sewer lines, but you don't have to think a whole lot to say that 2,000 or 1,000 feet of sewer line is probably going to be cost prohibitive for a four lot subdivision. So, I just wanted to pass it along to you. And thank you, Madam Chairman. That's all I have.
See, I was, City Manager, Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. In the past, we have let someone come in and do a conceptual, preliminary, and a final. And this is a question for Larry, or possibly Will. If Mr. Tardy were to choose when he comes back to do, do all three or whatever it takes to, can he proceed with that even though there might be a variance that they might not allow? Could they approve it on a contingency?
I might suggest that the, the next step in the process would be, go ahead and, and as, as indicated in the motion, make the revisions that are necessary and then submit a final plat. Because in my, again, in my estimation, determination of the development as, as proposed, it does not meet the major subdivision threshold. And as a result, there is not a requirement for conceptual and preliminary plats. Minor subdivisions only require final plat review and approval. So, the step that was taken tonight was felt necessary by both the applicant and city staff so that a lot of these issues could be addressed so that the, the, the project could move forward with the understanding of, of the, I guess, vision that, that everybody had on this thing. So, my, I might suggest that the next step would be the submission of a final plat. Stat, as we would do with, with all submissions of final plats, staff would have a staff review meeting. We would issue comments at that time. If there's any lingering items during the staff review meeting, then, then the owner would make those revisions necessary and submit a revised set for then to come to the planning commission for, for your review and approval. And then at that stage, you could decide if, if you wanted to allow further variances from anything or if you wanted to move forward as, as what you determined tonight.
And from a legal standpoint, there's no problem with that because if you bring it back, and let's say that something that the staff approved, you wanted something additional, you could certainly approve that final plat subject to making the changes because you have the final trump card. You have to sign off on, on the plat. And if, if you say, we're going to approve this contention upon your removing this or adding this note, when he gets it added, he brings it back and, and you don't sign it until you see that change made.
Thank you both. That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Communicate.
If I can, City Mayor Hollis, any news or anything you can share with the public about anything you coming in or moving forward, anything that you can share at this time?
Of course, everyone knows about Taco Bell. It's, the footing's been forward and what else is up there today. They were working, that's it so far. And we still have some contact from Murphy Oil on the property between Pizza Hut and Fred's by the light at Walmart. And John's been getting some activity on some subdivisions. So-
That's great.
I think we're not at liberty to divulge that just yet. But we do have quite a bit. And I believe you also asked, was another spot in Bowie Commons this afternoon. And that's another thing over here. And I'm not going to say, well, who that is just yet, but there's another possibility of a piece of rental property over there being took, took care of.
Bowie Commons, can I ask a question on it? The entrance across from McDonald's up toward the library right there?
Yes, sir.
The island that is there, there's a very sharp piece of metal where it was like a sign's been run over and cut off. And it's about four or five inches tall right there. Somebody could really lose control if they were to get up on there.
Is that on the Bowie Commons side of the road?
I'm sorry?
Yes, it's on there.
Is it?
It's in the island.
Yes, they, someone ran over it, like a truck ran over it. It's, it's their sign. And I think they have been contacted.
Yeah, okay. I just-
I believe. I, I can, I can verify that tomorrow, but we have discussed that.
Yeah.
Communication from the Planning Commission members. Mr. Sutton?
Just a couple of quick things. I'd like to recognize Mr. Burke, Burke, you'll step up. As we, normally we do, if someone's running for a office within the city, we'd like to introduce them every time they come. I don't mind introducing them because it just shows that much stronger interest in the city. Mr. Burke, anything you'd like to share with us? He's running for city, city judge?
I'm running for city judge. Just want to let everyone know, I'm a 10-year resident affair of U. I've been practicing law for, going on 11 years now. Have two young children, one of which is in Westwood and one that's over at Pro Kids. And just want to let everyone know that I had, those are my two most important reasons for wanting to be judge. know that I had, those are my two most important reasons for wanting to be judge, is to make sure that there is a very safe community for them and everyone else, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, just for notification purposes, I guess, Walker Bookstore has moved from their old location down here next to Save Lot, up to where the old parts house used to be behind the BP station, so if you're looking for them, that's where they're at, please continue to shop local, and as a matter of fact, you don't have a choice if you're looking for a bookstore in Fairview right now, so go up there and make sure we take care of their business. I would like to, can you stand up, please? Yeah, stand up. Yeah, you're at every meeting, and I want to commend you on that, you're one of the few people that are able to do that and show the interest, so I just want to know that we're very proud that you do show up and show an interest in it, and thank you for coming out tonight, too, sir. That's all, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Mangram?
I would like to thank our city engineer for one, and our staff for another, because without these thorough staff and engineer comments, we couldn't have productive meetings as we do, so I just want to thank you all for y'all's effort.
I'll second those comments, thank you guys very much for helping us prepare for a decision tonight, so no further comments.
Mr. Beata?
I have nothing to add to that tonight, thank you.
Mr. Dowdy?
I would like to thank everybody for all of the useful information. I'm new, and I'm kind of learning as I go, and it was great information, and I think it was a great meeting. Everybody, I think, did the right thing.
Mr. Mitchell?
I want to echo what Mr. Mangram said, thank you, Will, and staff for, it's a good comments to go off of on this review, and it's.
Mr. Rowe?
Outstanding job with the staff, and Tidy cooperated with Lisa and I, as far as understanding what his intent was, and how, what we were looking for, so I think it was a good cooperation. I just have one request from the staff, that if it's possible to, by the next meeting, to have a digital copy, a digital copy of the zoning map, so if it comes up in the meeting, that we can put it overhead, I think instead of, because I think right now it's just on the wall out there, so that would be a request, if that could be done.
Okay. I'm going to agree with the staff, I mean, y'all have done such a great job, I mean, it's, you know, we need all the information we can get to make the best decisions, and I just commend you on, all of you, on your hard work. There's a lot of activity going on right now, next door, and other places with a bunch of new businesses, there's at least four or five going on next door that I know of, that it's just so exciting to see things happening out here. There was an article in the Tennessean that highlighted Fairview, and it was really awesome about, you know, the houses residential coming available, and being a part of Williamson County, and just being able to get a great house for, you know, versus Franklin and Brentwood, a little more expensive, and here, you know, the prices are reasonable, and people can move out here into this great community and, you know, enjoy being in Williamson County and the schools, and I just, I really enjoyed that article, so you might want to read it, it was in the Tennessean. I just want to, you know, just say, you know, keep your money in Fairview, shop local, we want to support our city, and thanks to all the Planning Commission's hard work as well in making the decisions tonight, it was a good meeting, that's all. You have a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? Or adjourned?